I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 5th, 2017 Papillion City Council meeting order. Mrs. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That's correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers and in the entryway. Got a couple of, we've got a special presentation tonight. We've got two oaths of office for firefighters. Chief, do you want to share a little bit about them before we give the oath?
I would love to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is always a fun and exciting time for us as we embark on the career of, in this case, two new firefighters with us. I would like to introduce you to, first off, Greg Hall. Greg comes to us from Waterloo. He's a native of Omaha. He most recently has been in the construction and real estate business, and he has three years of experience in firefighting with the Waterloo Volunteer Fire Department. Greg, can you come up and share what family members you have with us?
Hi, everyone. My parents, Bob and Sheila Hall, and then my girlfriend Angela Kurtz and her mother, Charlene Kurtz.
Very good. Nice to have you with us. Thank you, Greg. And then Patrick Turner. Patrick is an Air Force veteran, has seven years' experience in the Air National Guard as a firefighter at the Lincoln Airport. The Lincoln Airport is a little bit different from what we're used to in that the Air National Guard provides the fire and crash rescue services at that airport. So he comes to us there. He is a native of Crete, Nebraska, and eventually through the Air Force and everything, found his way back home and now a member of the Papillion Fire Department. Patrick, welcome, and please share with us, he's got a little bit of a group with him tonight.
Thanks, Chief. Hi, everyone. Yeah, I have my wife here, Emily, and then I have my mom and dad here as well. My brothers, Matt, Zach, and Alex, and then my Aunt Blenda and Uncle Judd, and then my in-laws, Marge and Fred. So that's everybody.
Very good. Thank you. I told Greg and Pat that I used to try to make, try to announce the family and friends that were here, and I would screw it up every time. So I took a note from Chief Lyons's book and asked the new firefighters now to introduce them. So, Mr. Mayor, if you would, present the oath.
Gentlemen, if you'd come on up. I think you had the oath ahead of time.
Yep.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Patrick Turner.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
That I take this obligation freely
That I will take this obligation freely
And without mental reservation
And without mental reservation
Or for the purpose of evasion
Or for the purpose of evasion
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially
Perform the duties of firefighter
Perform the duties of a firefighter
According to the law
According to the law
And the best of my ability
And the best of my ability
And I do further swear
And I do further swear
That I do not advocate
That I do not advocate
Nor my member of
Nor my member of
Any political party or organization
Any political party or organization
That advocates the overthrow of the government
That advocates the overthrow of the government
Of the United States or of this state
Of the United States or this state
By force or violence
By force or violence
And that during such time
And that during such time
As I am in this position
And as I am in this position
I will not advocate
I will not advocate
Nor become a member of
Nor become a member of
Any political party or organization
Any political party or organization
That advocates the overthrow of the government
That advocates the overthrow of the government
Of the United States
Of the United States
Or of this state
Or of this state
By force or violence
By force or violence
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mayor. Congratulations. Chief. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, gentlemen, and welcome. Next is Administrator's Report. Ms. Myers, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure all of you, if you've driven down 84th Street, you've seen the work on the pedestrian bridge. Well, more work to come this weekend. We are closing 84th Street on Friday, the 8th, beginning at 7:00 PM. The walkway span is going to be installed. Veranna's expecting that to take about 12 hours, so that road is going to be closed till early that next morning, if everything goes well, which we're hopeful it will. Also, Mayor Black and I are planning a council retreat after the 1st of the year. We're targeting the latter part of February. I'm going to ask Allie to get ahold of you and see what your available dates are so we can make sure that as many of you can attend. So we'll be getting back to you on that. Also, the public solicitation for the community center names closes on Friday, December 8th. Again, we're encouraging the public to submit names for consideration. To date, 48 names have been submitted. Trent and I are going to go assume, assemble the names and present it in a format so the council can provide input and selection of those names, and we would expect that to happen maybe before the next council meeting or early in January so we can get the community center named. So that's all I have, Mayor Black.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
I'd like to pull C-7.
C-7 is polled. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Jaworski.
I just wanted to bring this off because I think this is a real neat thing that we're doing, and it's going to save the taxpayers a lot, a lot of money, and I'd like to, if Jeff could just touch base and say everything that really is going to be done. Thanks.
You bet. Mr. Jaworski, this is a project that we've been doing over the last couple of years. Started in 2013, did it in 2014, didn't do it last year, but then we're bringing it back again this year. Essentially, what we do is we take a fiberglass pipe sleeve, dip it in resin, and then they inflate it in an existing pipe system to actually line the piping, to help give it some more service life. The only other alternative in replacing the pipe is to tear up the streets, which obviously costs millions and millions of dollars. And so this is a great alternative for us to rehabilitate existing sanitary and storm sewer pipe in place without spending a lot of dollars on reconstruction of roads and relocation of other utilities.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item C-7, Resolution R170223, a resolution to approve the contract for 2017-2018 sewer rehabilitation to Municipal Pipe Tool Company, LLC of Hudson, Iowa, in the amount of $102,092.10. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. Proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Jaworski.
I just wanted to bring this off because I think this is a real neat thing that we're doing, and it's going to save the taxpayers a lot, a lot of money, and I'd like to, if Jeff could just touch base and say everything that really is going to be done. Thanks.
You bet. Mr. Jaworski, this is a project that we've been doing over the last couple of years. Started in 2013, did it in 2014, didn't do it last year, but then we're bringing it back again this year. Essentially, what we do is we take a fiberglass pipe sleeve, dip it in resin, and then they inflate it in an existing pipe system to actually line the piping, to help give it some more service life. The only other alternative in replacing the pipe is to tear up the streets, which obviously costs millions and millions of dollars. And so this is a great alternative for us to rehabilitate existing sanitary and storm sewer pipe in place without spending a lot of dollars on reconstruction of roads and relocation of other utilities.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Ordinance for first reading, item D-1, Ordinance 1794, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from GC, General Commercial, to Office O for the property legally described as part of Tax Lot 30 of Section 26 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6:00 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of 72nd and Cornhusker. The applicant is the city of Papillion. It's lots 9 through 11 Papillion Business Technology Park. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. Item D-2, Ordinance 1795, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from agricultural AG to R1, single-family residential, low-density, for the property legally described as Tax Lot 3 of Section 34 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6:00 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located at 11204 South 90th Street. The applicant is the city of Papillion. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Klug. Item D-3, Ordinance 1796, an ordinance to approve the vacation of Shepherd Street Right Of Way at the corner of South 114th Street and Shepherd Street. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Glover. Item D-4, an ordinance to amend the city of Papillion ward boundaries to incorporate SID number 137 and an area zone to light industrial in the southwest portion of the existing city limits as annexed by Ordinance 1789. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Staff is requesting a waiver of the second and third readings, which requires a supermajority. The reason for that is to keep the integrity of the election process. If we waive second and third, the election commissioner can react to that, and the SID residents that are annexed will be able to participate in the 2018 election. If we don't waive second and third, we miss the deadline, and they would be off a year within the election. So it's an opportunity for them to vote in our city elections now that they're residents. So is there a motion to waive the second and third readings of Ordinance 1798?
No.
Motion by Councilman Gaines. Is there a second? Councilwoman Klug? Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Again, this takes a supermajority.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. So now, is there a motion to, we need to do a quick amendment. The ward, the map that was put out had a, the Bellino Apartments were included in the wrong area, and we need to fix that, and that has been passed out. Is there a motion to amend Ordinance 1798? Oh, we need a motion to approve Ordinance 1798 first. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1798?
No.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Now, is there a motion to amend Ordinance 1798 to delete Section D-5 having to do with lots 1 through 5, Bellino 96, and Ward 4? And you do have the updated ward maps at your seat. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents on the motion to amend? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote on the motion to amend Ordinance 1798.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
So the motion is amended, so we'll now have a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? I believe Mr. Yule's with us. You want to come up for just a second? One, just to give you some press, because people might not know you and the role that MAPPA plays. MAPPA is a regional planning organization. We talk region, it's probably eight counties if you're sitting down in Florida and thinking of Omaha metro area. It's about eight counties, I think, includes a couple of them in Iowa, and Greg's the executive director of MAPPA. To make sure we retain independence in our mapping process, we do reach out to MAPPA for their services and recommendations, and then those recommendations come forward, and we work with that. So you want to just introduce yourself, talk a little bit about the methodology and why we landed where we are?
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Greg Yule. I'm the executive director of MAPPA, and we've been working with staff and the council on these proposed new wards for the city of Papillion. With the annexation, we have to take a look and keep it within a certain percentage of, if you take the population and distribute that equally. So we take a look at that, try and maintain some integrity in the wards, so there's a little bit of art, a little bit of science to it, and obviously get feedback from staff and from the city council as to what makes most sense. So have had some discussions, had a few different options, and I believe the final options you have before you are the ones that made the most sense. So we do have Josh Corrigan, a staff member here, GIS coordinator, who did a lot of the analysis on this. If there's any detailed questions here, I'd be happy to answer those today.
I appreciate it, and I think the one that was landed on is the one from MAPPA's perspective was the most appropriate because it's the most balanced from a numbers perspective, percentage-wise, and so as we grow, each ward has room to absorb some of that growth without another repapping effort. So I appreciate everything you guys have done.
Absolutely.
Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Anybody we want to speak against? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have any council discussion? Please vote on the motion as amended.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thanks again, Greg. Next is item D-5, Ordinance 1799, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG, agricultural, to MU, mixed-use, and R3, urban-family residential, for the property legally described as part of the west half of the northeast quarter of Section 34 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6:00 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, together with Tax Lot 5, a tax lot located in the east half of the northeast quarter of Section 34 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6:00 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of Washington Street and Highway 370. The applicant is Royce Enterprises Papillion Commons. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. Thank you. Ordinances for second reading and public hearings. Item E-1, Ordinance 1793, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from agricultural AG to R2, single-family residential, mixed, medium-density, and MU, mixed-use, for the property legally described as attractive land located in the east half of the northwest quarter, lying east of the abandoned Missouri Pacific Railroad, together with tax lots 1A, 1B, and 2 in the west half of the northeast quarter, all in Section 31 Township 14 North Range 12 East, except those parts taken for Highway 370 Right Of Way, generally located on the southeast and southwest corners of 126th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is Founders Ridge LLC. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is John Fullencamp. My address is 11440 West Center Road here on behalf of the applicant. My technical assistant here is Andrew Custer from TD Squared, because those of you that know me, I would be coming in with big plats and haven't quite caught up to this technology. But in any event, this item and the next item relate to the Founders Ridge subdivision, which is proposed either side of 126th Street on the south side of Highway 370, as it's shown on the map here. I know you have your packet, so I won't go through all of that, but there is a request for a single-family residential, medium-density, and a mixed-use, which obviously comes back to you when the final mixed-use comes. It's all in conformance with your future land use plan and is detailed in your report. I'd be happy to answer any questions because the next item is the plat. I'll get into a little more detail of the specifics of the development of the project.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? And if you'd state your name for the record.
I'd be happy to. I'm Julie Masters, representing RSM Farms, and we are the farm that is just to the west of this particular development. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to say we certainly are in support of the activity that's going on in Papillion. We just are here to make certain that a couple of things are attended to. One, in terms of maintaining erosion control so that that doesn't impact our farm as we continue in that venue. And then the other thing is in thinking about, as they propose, looking at some sewer outflow, that we are given as much information as possible so that we can make the appropriate decision as needed, so.
Mark, do you have her contact information?
I'd be, I'd be happy to provide that.
If you could pass it on. Mark Strzema's our planning director. If you could make sure we have your contact information, so we can make sure you're in the loop on some of that.
We would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other opponents? Anybody neutral? I'll close the public hearing. Next is item F-1, Resolution R170211, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the east half of the northwest quarter, lying east of the abandoned Missouri Pacific Railroad, together with tax lots 1A, 1B, and 2 in the west half of the northeast quarter, all in Section 31 Township 14 North Range 12 East, except those parts taken for Highway 370 Right Of Way, generally located on the southeast and southwest quarters, corners of 126th and Highway 370. Applicant is Founders Ridge LLC. Open the public hearing. Proponents?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, John Fullencamp. I just wanted to clarify one thing with Julie, and we've met with the Masters representatives over time, and you're conducting such an efficient meeting when you called for proponents, she got up, but by the time you got up here, it looked like she was an opponent. So am I correct in saying that she is a proponent of the project, but she wants to make sure that we work with their family with regard to the erosion control, which obviously is a sensitive issue? And as you know, we are required to submit what's called a SWIP plan, which, Storm Water Prevention Pollution Control Plan, and we will continue to work with her and her representatives and her attorney, who we have met with before. And again, this project has, is about 110-acre parcel, as shown on the map, on the either side of 126th Street on the south side of Highway 370. Will be developed in three phases. The first phase will have 142 single-family lots, the second phase, 59 single-family lots, and the third phase of mixed-use development, which is a little over 27 acres. Interesting thing about this piece of property is 10% of this property is actually open space, so if you look up there on the map, on the, kind of the bottom of the map, you'll see some of the drainage ways. There's connections to the trail systems, to the property to the east, and we will coordinate with their development because they need access through us. They also, for that continued development, will need this sewer. The sewer line, as you look at that map on the left, kind of goes perpendicular and then generally to the north. The thing that we have to work out between the time we, between now and the time we come back to you for final plat and subdivision agreement is the actual location of the sewer. I think it's both of our interests to try to have that sewer as close to the ditch that's there as possible. Those of you in the development business know that there are jurisdictional issues with regard to that that we'll have to continue to work out. So we are sensitive to our neighbors, to the Masters family, and have pledged to them that we will continue our dialogues with them and work out these things as we go forward. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are. We appreciate the favorable recommendation of both the department and your planning commission.
Mr. Stube.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, John, just a question. I see based on the information that we have that Phase 1 is kind of the southern part of the
Correct.
plat, and so 126th Street being kind of that major northwest, north-south street going through, that's proposed to be all paved all the way to the south.
That is included within Phase 1.
All the way to the south.
Correct. So this, all the way to the south. So the, so the first section of lots, the first, what did I say, 142 lots is essentially from about that, you see the main street coming through, right about that second street in either, those lots either side of that. So 126th Street will be built, and the last section of single-family lots would be those just below the open spaces that you see, and then the mixed-use developments on either side.
So, John, what's the timing of the project itself? Spring, spring of next year?
Absolutely, as soon as, as soon as we can. I think you're probably seeing subdivisions that come in more in phase developments now. We all went through the Great Recession. We all learned lessons as we did that. So, you know, obviously, it's the developers' hope and our hope that as soon as Phase 1 is ready and we start building houses, we'll come in with Phase 2, but you need to be market sensitive and financially sensitive to the public costs that are incurred.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, maybe you've already answered this question, but most specifically, when can we see 126th Street to be done paved from the highway to the southern border of your development?
With Phase 1.
And that will be when, next year?
As soon as we can get through your process and let contracts in the spring. So it will be next year.
Okay, thank you.
I'm hoping to be back here with a final plat if we can get everything worked out, February, March.
Well, you're probably aware that we have developments that are being proposed south of that that will need
Understand that.
Need to hook onto 126th Street. So you're working
Absolutely. Anything that you can do to help us to get that street in sooner, it's in our best interest to get that street in as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R170211?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. F-2, Ordinance 1758, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG, agricultural, to R2, single-family residential, medium-density, for the property legally described as Tax Lot 15, located in the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 33 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6:00 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located northeast of the 108th Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Dynasty Homes LLC, the reserve at Shram Point. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1758?
No.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Klug. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. A related item, F-3, Resolution R170216, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as Tax Lot 15, a tax lot located in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter, and also in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 33 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6:00 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located northeast of 108th Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Dynasty Homes LLC, the reserve at Shram Point. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R170216?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Klug.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I see in here that Lake Tahoe Drive goes from 106th Avenue to 107th Street and probably, what, 300 feet long? Is that something that we've approved already, Lake Tahoe Drive?
Mr. Stube? I mean, Mr. Stube. Mr. Strzema.
So the configuration of the streets is consistent with the preliminary plat. It is a little confusing in that 106th circle. The Right Of Way connects with Shram, but it does not take access from Shram at that location.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking at it from the standpoint that I don't, are we anticipating that we're going to have a future extension of Lake Tahoe Drive? It's, I mean, it's a relatively short street. It's, I mean, it's a relatively short street. Is that something that's going to be confusing from the standpoint of access?
So, so it has two points of access to Shram?
Yeah, off of 106th Ave and, or excuse me, 105th Ave to 107th Street, and it would appear that Lake Tahoe Drive is about-
I see what you're saying.
200 feet, 300 feet long?
The street naming is, you've, you've got 107th Street, and then it converts to Lake Tahoe, and then it converts to 105th Street, and you don't ever take a turn.
Correct.
Yeah. You know, we work with 911 and Sarpy County GIS to, to do all of our street naming, and they have a convention that they use. A lot of it is specific to how GPS works and how we, you know, we get around in the modern age, and that, that's both for 911 and for package delivery and, and all of those things. So, you know, we, we do, I don't remember if we questioned this one, but we do often question them, and we think there's something that may be confusing in the field, and, and they, they can do minor adjustments, but they have to follow their protocols to meet their 911 requirements. So this has been vetted, I guess, is, is my point.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F. 4, Resolution R. 170217, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement for the reserve at Shram Point. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 170217?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Also, related item, F. 5, Resolution R. 170218, a resolution to approve the sewer and water connection agreement for SID number 318, the reserve at Shram Point. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 170218?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F. 6, Ordinance 1791, an ordinance to amend Chapter 85, Animals of the Papillion Municipal Code, to allow many pigs as pets within the city's corporate limits, introduced by Councilman Mungard. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 17? Before we do that, Mr. Mungard, you've got your light on. Well, we don't have a motion on the floor. Let me call for the motion real quick. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1791?
I, I would make a motion to table this ordinance until the December 19th meeting. Councilman Florence is absent tonight, and he assures us he will be here at that time, and I think it's fair to him to let him participate.
So the motion is to table to a date certain of 12/19?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Someone's discussion or straight to a vote? That's straight to a vote. Please vote.
Three yeas, four nays, by Jaworski, Klug, Stube, and Ingberg.
Motion fails. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1791?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1791.
Motion by Councilman Mungard. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Glover. There's also been anticipated a couple of motions to amend. We've got those in advance, so this might be the appropriate time to go through those. The first one that was provided, Mr. Mungard, I'll take the liberty of reading it, "Motion to amend Ordinance 1791 to raise the weight limit of 100 pounds to 200 pounds, but retain the requirement that a veteran must confirm the weight of the mini-pig annually for licensing purposes." Did I get that right?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Amendment Number 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Mr. Mungard.
Pretty simply, this was a suggestion made by the Humane Society. They are our paid experts in this area, and I suggest that we follow their guidance, just like we do regularly with other experts who give us advice.
Thank you. Ms. Klug.
I understand the desire to raise it to 100 pounds, but I look at this more as a public safety issue. We know there's a history of these animals getting out, and if you think about an animal on a road and a car going 45 miles an hour, that's a lot of calls to our fire and rescue. 200 pounds stopping a car causes a lot of damage, and I know some people will potentially say, well, dogs get out, most dogs are not 200 pounds, and most dogs have different instincts from pigs. They move a little bit quicker when there's a car coming. For those reasons, I'm not able to support this change of the weight limit.
Is there any other council discussion? If not, please vote on the motion to amend.
Two yeas, five nays, by Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg, and Gaines.
Motion to amend fails. There is a second motion that was proposed, a motion to amend Ordinance 1791 to eliminate vaccination and blood testing requirements. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Amendment Number 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Mr. Mungard.
I'll, I'll again just point out that the Humane Society has come in and indicated that this is an unnecessary part of the regulation. It imposes upon people a obligation that in all likelihood cannot be met, or even if they can, is unnecessary because the vaccinations do not prevent any diseases that are relevant to mini-pigs. Again, I long ago learned that when somebody who knows more about the subject than I gives me, gives me advice, unless I have good reason not to follow their advice, I should do so. And so I choose to follow the good advice of the Humane Society, and I will vote in favor of eliminating this unnecessary provision in the ordinance.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote on Amendment Number 2. Yes, sir? Nope, go ahead.
When you, when you put that out there, I missed the last meeting, but I did watch it on Papio Vision, and when he suggested to get rid of the vaccinations, I thought that's kind of, doesn't make sense to me. So I Googled vaccinations for mini-pigs, and there's five vaccinations that all mini-pigs have to have. It depends on what region you're in. You could have two, you could have all five. One of them's rabies. So for us to sit there and say, "We're not going to vaccinate these pigs," to me, that's crazy, and that is why I'm not supporting this one.
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote on the motion to amend.
One yay, six nays, by Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg, Gaines, and Glover.
That motion fails. Are, those were the two motions to amend that were provided ahead of time. Are there any other motions to amend? See none. The original motion is on the floor, so we'll have council discussion on the original motion as presented. Mr. Mungard.
I will just take a moment, and I beg your indulgence, to explain why I brought this ordinance back to the council. As we all know, that there was a similar attempt to approve mini-pigs in Papillion back in 2001, and most all of us were here at that time. When I suggested bringing this issue back, some people told me it was a waste of time, and perhaps they were correct. Maybe it's a waste of time. But I hope it hasn't wasted anyone's time because of the purpose for which I brought it back. After reviewing the discussion back in 2011, I concluded that we really could do a better job, that if we're going to regulate mini-pigs, we should do it in a more rational fashion than I saw was being done in 2011. So I'll start with a little statement of what this ordinance is not about, for me at least. It's, it's really not to me about whether Papillion citizens should have mini-pigs as pets. I listened to the testimony of the Hagan family at the public hearing, and I'm not going to ignore the affection that they expressed for their pets. I don't ignore the stories of how Tori and Lucy have bring them enjoyment. I'm glad that these pets have added to their quality of life, as they told us. As a fellow pet owner, I fully understand how a person can love an animal such as they've expressed. But, you know, now if this ordinance passes, I'm not going to go out and get a mini-pig as a pet, and I suspect none of you will either. And I'm positive that most people in Papillion won't. But again, allowing people in Papillion to have a mini-pig as a pet was not my primary goal in bringing this ordinance back in front of the city council. To me, this is a question about how government in Papillion regulates people's lives and how we make those decisions. I think that's a bigger question than what pet should or should not be had in anybody's home in Papillion. But that's what we're doing here. We're really regulating lives. It's my belief that when government regulates people's lives, they should do it sparingly and only when the regulation is necessary to allow people to live together in a community with quality lives. That's the direction, I mean, that's the basic element that I've tried to apply in all of my votes for ordinances that we pass regulating people's lives. And I think that when we're regulating what pets people can or cannot have, we should recognize that this is an area of their lives that's very personal, and so we should be very cautious about telling them what animals they can and cannot love in our city, because that's really what we're doing. The testimony of the Hagan family made it very clear that that's the emotional connection that people, that exists between people and animals, and what we're really talking about here, that part of their life. So we should be very cautious about telling them that they're wrong when they love a particular kind of an animal. Decisions on how we allow people to live their lives in general, or what we prohibit in people's lives, should be made based on how the conduct impacts others and the overall community. Conduct should be prohibited only when it in some way hurts others or degrades the community. Our decisions should not be based upon our personal preferences. It should not matter whether I want to have a mini-pig as a pet. It should not matter whether any of us do or do not want to have one living next to us. Really, the only decision that should be is how would this affect our community and people who live around the mini-pig? And the testimony of the, the Hagan family, I think, has pointed out that that's really what's involved here, is how do we impact somebody's life? I mean, we can, we can pass speed limits, and they really don't affect a lot of people. We can pass plats like this, and the effect is long-term at best, the street names, et cetera. When we start telling people what animal they can and cannot love in Papillion, that's a very direct, personal impact on their lives. When I look back at the vote that was taken in 2011, I, I didn't, couldn't see that the proper standard was being used, in my view. In my view, we should, we should make these decisions on how it commit, conduct, how it impacts others and the overall community, and prohibit it only when it in some way hurts others or degrades our community. Our decisions should be based on real evidence, not speculation, not speculation about what might happen when a 200-pound pig gets hit by a car, not speculation on what pigs will be, what yards pigs will be digging up, but on some real, solid understanding of what we're talking about. So I ask, the question that I ask myself, is there any evidence that anybody else's lives will be adversely affected if the Hagan family or others have a mini-pig as a house pet? Will it be a nuisance or create some other adverse impact on other person's quality of life? Will it be a public health threat? Will it be a public safety threat? Unless the answer is yes, I don't think city government should, I think city government should just stay out of that part of people's lives unless we can point to evidence that shows that, yes, these will be problems. We have much evidence before us that allowing many pigs in Papillion will not hurt others or our community, and they, again, I'll preach, it sounds like I'm preaching to the choir, but the Humane Society told us that their years of experience in other cities show that many pigs as pets don't create problems for others. And I think that that experience in other cities should not be ignored. Of course, we believe Papillion is unique and is special and has special qualities other cities don't have, and in fact, I've heard that as an explanation as to why we are free to just ignore what happens in other cities. But I, you know, while I believe that Papillion is special, I sat back and pondered whether the absence of mini-pigs as house pets in Papillion is really one of those special qualities that we brag about. I couldn't see that it is. I've seen the, many, many people who've moved into Papillion in the time I've been here, thousands of people, and I cannot believe any one of them moved to Papillion because mini-pigs are prohibited pets. I cannot see how that is really anything that affects that decision that anybody makes. Even if we're going to ignore the experience of other cities, I think we should give some relevance to the experience of our citizens, such as the Hagan family right here in Papillion, and not ignore that. For example, for over three years, they've lived in their home with mini-pigs and no opposition or problems expressed by their neighbors. Until one ran away, most people didn't know it was even there. I think that's pretty telling about the problems that will pop up, that we speculate about with mini-pigs. You know, I, I know that many pigs were turned down in 2011, but when I look at that, I see that there's just a lot of speculation on that and complaints that, well, they're going to unavoidably root up the yard and dismay the neighbors. Well, I, you know, I asked the Hogans to bring in their pictures of their yard, and so I see, well, is, is this got any rational basis behind it?
Those were provided at the council seat, so everybody has those.
And I think that the, the testimony of the Hagens and the pictures they have provided show that that speculation is just inaccurate. In addition, I tried to take that into account when I drafted the ordinance, and you will note that it specifically prohibits pig pens, other types of enclosures out in a yard that you, where a pig would live in. Pigs are supposed to be house pets, and if they're not, then they have to go. That, no, I can understand how people would be concerned about, you know, a mighty old pig pen in the neighbor's backyard, so the ordinance specifically prohibits that. The ordinance is structured with many elements that I tried to put in to protect other people from any adverse impact these pets could have. And I think there's those showing that these pets would present any threat or to public safety or health, even, okay, the vaccination requirement is still there, so if there's diseases, contrary to what the Humane Society tells us, if there are diseases that would be spread by mini-pigs, we've taken care of it. The vaccination is still there. I sat and I pondered, well, what, how have we regulated pets in other instances? And of course, dogs are the most prevalent, I think, pet in Papillion, and we regulate dogs. I said, well, okay, if we're talking about threats to public safety or health, I think many pigs are less of a threat than some dogs that are common in Papillion. The Humane Society fielded, they told us, an average of over 18,000 complaints about dogs every year in the three cities that they listed, 18,000-plus complaints. But, but certainly, I don't hear anybody coming forward to say, oh, we need to prohibit dogs in Papillion. You know, and further in looking at the regulations we have, I, I note that we even recognize that dogs can present a real danger to people because we have ordinances that specifically prohibit dangerous or even potentially dangerous dogs. You know, and I, I sat and I thought, I've read newspaper stories and seen stories about the damage that dogs can do, and I fully understand why we would have those regulations, but yet we still allow dogs to be pets in Papillion. So I guess I'll quit. I'll stop by just asking, are we, are we really willing to sit here and say that it's okay for people to have as a pet an animal that, in the words of our own ordinance, has been known to kill or seriously injure others, but we're so afraid of having little Tori or little Lucy or their kind that we must keep them out of our city? When I pose it that way in my mind, I think, well, that's, seems to me to be a pretty irrational way to regulate this very personal part of cities, of our citizens' lives, and I don't want to participate in irrational regulation of the personal aspects of our citizens' lives. So that's why I'm, I brought this ordinance up. I didn't see that that approach was being done in 2011, and I wanted to at least bring forward that that should be the approach we do, and that's why I'm going to vote for this ordinance, and I encourage you all to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other council discussion? Ms. Klug.
Thank you. We talked some about, I did, I brought it up, the possibility of a car hitting a pig. If I remember correctly, Ms. Councilman Mungard commented it may happen. If I remember correctly, that did happen and hence cost one animal already to lose a leg because they were hit by a car. So it's not if, it's when will it happen again if mini-pigs are allowed? The other item that the Nebraska Humane Society brought up that I found very interesting is that there were 24 mini-pigs, and it was reported that there were 42 calls. That's almost two calls per ant, per mini-pig that was made. In that same timeframe, there's about 130,000 to 140,000 dogs, and there were 93,000 calls. That's less than one call per dog. So as I look at it and I think about the percentages of what's going on with these animals and what's coming into our community, I do see some cause and effects. I do see more, a higher percentage of calls for the mini-pigs. This becomes important when we remember that we pay for those services from the Nebraska Humane Society. Will it be a large cost? I don't know. But what I do know is it's something that we're asking every citizen to shoulder on their shoulders so that a few can have their pets. I certainly respect that everybody should have their choice, but at this point, because of the impacts that it could have- because of the impacts that it could have, I simply can't support this.
Thank you. Mr. Mumgaard.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. I apologize if I've misrepresented or misunderstood what was being said. I get it. A 200-pound pig being hit by a car is likely to cause more damage to the car than a 100-pound pig. I'm not sure that's entirely accurate, but I'll accept that as a fact. And I understand that pigs can get out, get into the streets. That's why the ordinance tried to address that. The ordinance specifically says, your pig has to be restrained in the yard, has to be fenced in. You cannot have a pig, a mini pig, if you don't have a fenced yard. You cannot have a mini pig out and about on the street if it isn't on a leash. We don't have those provisions for dogs, but yet there are very large dogs wandering around our city that seem to present traffic dangers if they get out. My point is just simply, one, we don't have a 200-pound mini pig out there because we only are approving 100 pounds. And then, secondly, well, I tried to address that concern in the ordinance by telling people that they have to keep their pigs in their yard, out of their street. So I can't, you know, I don't want to misrepresent or have anybody misunderstand that I think that's an insignificant part. It's just something that I think that the ordinance has taken care of as well as it can.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Seen none, please vote.
One yays, six nays, by Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg, Gaines, and Glover.
Motion fails. Next is item F.7, ordinance 1792, an ordinance to amend the 2017-2018 fiscal budget. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1792?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Klug. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F.8, resolution R.17-0212, resolution to elect a new city council president for a term of one year. We've got some students in the audience. I just want to explain real quick what's going on. We have eight elected council members. Every year, they elect a president. The role of the president is to fill in for the mayor when the mayor can't be here, preside over a meeting, but it's also our succession planning. So if the mayor cannot fulfill his elected term, then that council president becomes the mayor, and we elect that once a year. It is also the only vote that the council can take in secret, so if there's more than two people nominated, we will have a secret ballot, and if there's only one, then we'll probably just affirm that. So it's a little bit of the process. It's the only time you'll see a secret vote of the city council. With that, is there a motion to open nominations for council president?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mumgaard. Please vote on the motion to open nominations.
Seven yays, zero nays.
The floor is open. Nomination, Mr. Stube's got the floor. I'm sorry.
I'll nominate Gene Jaworski.
Okay. Mr. Jaworski, are there any others to be nominated? Going once, twice, last call? Is there a motion to close nominations for council president?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Ingberg. Please vote on the motion to close nominations.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Since there's only one name, not to, not a real purpose in doing a secret ballot, if there's no objection, is there a motion to approve resolution R.17-0217, electing council member Jaworski as council president? Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote. Ms. Klug and Mr. Stube.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gaines, for being council president last year, and congratulations, Mr. Jaworski, for next year.
You bet.
Next is committee reports, and I don't believe any committees have met. Do we have any comments from the floor? We get some, yes, sir. If you'd come up to the, can you come up to the podium, please?
Yes, sir.
And then, when you get there, restate your name for the record.
Frederick Skinner. I live at 1301 Devon, off 90th Street. You previously discussed briefly ordinance 1799. That's the first reading. You did not give me an opportunity as an opponent or proponent, or am I off-base there?
No, it's part of the process, and it's a good question, because we've got students here. When we do an ordinance, it actually takes three actions of the city council.
Okay.
Because it's a slow, deliberate process, because we don't want to sneak things through. The very first process is an introduction of the ordinance, and alls that is.
Yes.
Is there a council member that will introduce? On that one, that's what we did tonight. No other actions taken on that item at the point of introduction. And the logic there is now there is a council member that has tied their name to that ordinance, so if anybody has a question about it, they can reach that council member or anybody else. We wait two weeks before we take the next action, so the next council meeting will be the second of the three items. That's the public hearing. That's when we'll call for anybody that wants to speak in favor, anybody that wants to be opposed.
Very good.
And then we'll close the public hearing. No other action will be taken that night. Two weeks later, so it's a long process, six weeks.
I understand.
Two weeks later, so in this case, would be the first meeting in January, that's then when we will call for a formal motion of the council, a second. Then we'll have the council discussion and debate. So really, what that gives is an opportunity for, if an ordinance is introduced, it's an entire month before the council actually takes a vote.
Okay.
So the next council meeting is when we'll call for proponents and opponents.
Okay. I'll have my opportunity, my opportunity at that time.
That is correct, and we give anybody that wants to speak either direction, five minutes to speak on that item.
I understand.
So there's plenty of time.
Okay.
Great question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Any other council, any other comments from the floor? We've got some students here. You guys want to come up and introduce yourself and what brings you out? Come on up to the podium and... Go ahead and come on up.
Hi, I'm J, oh, my goodness, I'm sorry. I'm Jette Schmelzer from Papillion, Lovis to South, and I'm here for my applied learning project.
Wonderful. Thank you for coming out. Any other council comments? Any council comments? Seen none. Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Did attend a couple of events at Shadow Lake. They had, then the Nebraska Retail Federation launched a buy-local small business campaign at Shadow Lake is where they chose to do that, at Chocolatery Stom. It was a good event, and then they also had their holiday shopping kickoff. Ms. Myers, Ms. Councilwoman Klug, Councilman Gaines, and Chief Lyons, we had a meeting with the school district in regards to some SRO-type activities and kind of philosophy and direction there. Probably be some updates coming from that action. Good conversations. We met with Dr. Rickley and also Lee Dinker, both so administration and elected. Just make sure we're on the same page as far as SRO and how it works through the schools and some things we specifically want to look at there. Thank you, everybody, for supporting the groundbreaking. What a great turnout for that, including from some of our state-elected officials. And Lori, thanks for everything your staff has done. I know it's going to become a busy time for you guys. Ms. Myers, Ms. Coomer, Mr. Albers, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Lyons, we also met as well as we're heading into winter to just to make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as how snow emergencies work, who's keeping an eye on the weather, winter we declare, and what are the conditions we declare, and how do we get the word out? So that was a very good meeting, so I appreciate everybody on that. Just a couple of other quick reminders. If you have not been to Veterans Park at night, be sure to drive down there. Park staff did a wonderful job, and it was on their own initiative. If you remember, OPPD gave some grant money for some trees to kind of be the backstop of all the flags. The park staff put lights on the trees, and each tree is either red, white, or blue. So the entire backstop of Veterans Park is red, white, and blue evergreen trees, so thank you to Tony and his staff for that. Also, the reminder, to reiterate, the names are, the deadline for the names to be submitted for the community center are coming up. Helps spread that word. Committee assignments, we do that every year with the council, with the president elections, so I'm working on new assignments. I got information from four of you, but if you've got a specific desire for a specific committee and you haven't let me know, shoot me a note on that in the next couple of days, and then we'll probably have committee assignments at the next council meeting. Also, there are two dates in the city administrators' report to keep in mind, and the most important, Marty Lemming's retirement. After how many years? Eighty-seven?
[laughing]
But Marty's retirement is Thursday, December 14th at 2:00 p.m., so be sure to put that on your calendar, and we owe you a real big debt of gratitude, Marty, and so we want to send you off nicely.
Well, just last weekend.
Well, it's not his formal retirement. It's the open house for the retirement. So it's either a celebration of his retirement or a mourning of his retirement. I'm not sure which.
Right.
With that, any other council comments?
I just want to say the whole city.
Yeah, huge thank you again to Tony and his staff, and Public Works helps with that, and the foundation does a great job. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.